It's six o'clock, I'll take roll call now. Mr. Fuller Love?
Here.
Mr. Dominic?
Here.
Mrs. Lyons?
Here.
Mr. Kaber?
Here.
Mrs. DeBlak?
Here.
Mr. Helm?
Here.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are not.
Would that entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Uh-huh.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion was made by Mrs. Lyons, seconded by Mr. Dominic, to adopt the agenda as presented. Mrs. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Kaber?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlak?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller Love?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, recognition of members of the audience who have been on the side of tonight, you know? So moving on to the committee's report.
Oh, yeah?
Teacher's story.
Kayla.
Teacher's.
I'm going to do one.
All the time.
I'm Ellie Goble.
And I'm Kayla DeBlak.
And we are thrilled to bring you all the stellar news from here in the Sherrod School District.
Starting off with Sherrod High School, congratulations to our students of the month. Jonah Maury, Madison Crandall, Josie Harkey, Sawyer Curdenbach, Madeline Swanson, Hunter Bryby, Gabby Contral, Evelyn Minkley, and Grace McMillan. We also have Nadia Anderson headed to state wrestling. Good luck, Nadia. Boys regional basketball begins Wednesday at Farmington High School.
I'm ready to give the good news report on our junior high. We did well on math testing. Well, not just well, we did awesome on math testing. The seventh grader were the 99th percentile in the nation. The eighth graders were also the 94th percentile in the nation in math. For the English or reading, we were 84th percentile for seventh and eighth grade. They knocked it out. Their improvement from fall to winter was awesome. Way to go, junior high.
The seventh grade volleyball team is tied for first in the Prairieland Conference. Good luck at regionals next week. Several wrestlers are ranked in the top four finishers in next week's regionals. Way to go. Winola, Sherrod, and Matherville all recently had their school-wide spelling bees. Winners include Mia Van Tite at Matherville Intermediate, Annabelle Fritch at Winola Elementary, and Noble Wakely coming in second, and Noah Van Tyne from Sherrod Elementary. These spellers will go on to represent Sherrod at the regional spelling bee at Augustana College on February 24th.
Congratulations to all of our spellers. Now for all the great things happening at Matherville Intermediate. They were excited to get the kids back up for using seven snow days. Author Gary McPhier spoke with our students on January 25th. He discussed his book, My Mask, My War, A World War II Memorial, with our students and answered questions from the students.
What's happening at Winola Elementary? We're glad you asked. They hosted a Star-Lab for students during the last week of January. The Star-Lab is a portable planetarium that is borrowed from the ROE. There are several teachers in the building that are specially trained to deliver lessons to our students throughout this week. This may be a wonderful opportunity for our students to be able to study the Earth and beyond. Winola also kicked off its Kids' Heart Challenge, formerly known Jump Row for Heart this month. Winola's students will be collecting funds for the American Heart Association. Our P.E. teacher, Krueger, coordinates this and does a phenomenal job.
Winola students, Emily and Evelyn DeSutter, were featured in an Illinois farm filming commercial which was aired in the Super Bowl. It was fun to see our school's stars while watching the big game. And there are lots of new things at Sherrod Grade School. Sherrod Elementary held a re-sculpture ribbon cutting ceremony on February 8th and had a fabulous turnout. The staff at Sherrod are very thankful for all the support that went into making the event a tremendous success. With countless folks lending hands to ensure the event was a special experience for all present, a huge thank you to everyone who attended and took part in making it happen.
Similarly, Sherrod Grade also held a first few sports game at the new gymnasium. Our fourth grade girls' junior layer Tigers facing against Mercer County. The competition drew a large crowd, as well as it was wonderful to finally be able to host an event in the new space. We look forward to all of the future events and opportunities in our new gymnasium. Will provide our students and community. What a bunch of good news for our school.
You said Ellie. Signing off, this is Kayla DeBlak.
And Ellie Goble.
Thanks for listening and go Tigers.
Rar.
I would like to see the math testing for the junior high, please. Details?
You got it. Detailed, detailed math testing.
Sure.
I still remember how to read those. Plato was more of a challenge today, but math testing is still fresh on the line. So, uh, next item, our Tiger Talent. We actually have two Tiger Talent awards to hand out tonight. So without further ado, I will turn it over again to Ms. Elliott and the more interesting look than me.
Oh, I'm watching.
You got two now.
Right.
Lacy is an easy choice for the Tiger Talent. The fact of the matter is that she goes above and beyond her job. I think I'm her third assistant principal, third vice assistant secretary.
While we've got the best front office staff around, I'll put them up against anybody. We love all of them. Lacy is the backbone of the office. She's the one that is basically the front line. When people come in, she's the face typically that greets them. And one of her most impressive duties is the ability to do a number of different items all at the same time.
So she would be our attendance secretary at the high school. She has to go through all the students at the high school level that aren't at school. And she has to make sure she has a reason, or tries to find the reasons, why they're not there when we were going through COVID. And we had hundreds of kids that were missing each and every day. And so Lacy's job was just, was unbelievable that she, every day, she would have to call each one of those parents, keep logs, keep records, keep everything, work with Ms. Boucher on, you know, why aren't students there? Communicate with the administration as to why not students there.
Beyond that, she's able to help out in the cafeteria when we're short. And she really is just, is that superstar in the front office. And I don't think she gets enough appreciation from any of us. And so we thought this would be a great opportunity to recognize her and her many, many wonderful efforts.
She's kind of private as a person, but when you get to know her, she has a great personality. She's funny. And one thing that sometimes when Connie's not there that we like to do with me, Sandy, and Lacy is that we'll listen to some rap music in the office. And so you probably wouldn't guess that she's a rap music fan, but she is. And she likes a lot of different music, but I mean, she's got a great personality. We're really lucky to have her.
Uh, we're tight knit staff in the front office. We get along very well together. We're able to share some funny, personal stories as they arise. And Lacy's a little more shy than the others. But we always try to make her laugh with some of embarrassing stories about ourselves. And she always gets a kick out of that. It's just like a family type of atmosphere in that front office. And that makes it very nice for all of us. When we come to work, it's many, most days, it's really not work at all. It's just being able to spend time with those that you care about. Your daughter now is a sub for us, and it is such fun for us to see her and her daughter being able to share some work time together and just see the mutual respect and admiration and love that they have for each other. And so it really does our heart wonders to see situations like that.
What she does behind the scenes is instrumental to making our school successful.
And something else that Lacy is tasked with is when the nurse is gone, she fills in for the nurse. And so while there's all these other activities and responsibilities going on, if a student comes in that needs meds or needs immediate attention, she has to take priority to do that. There was one memorable occasion a few years ago where a student had to come in and needed to use the restroom. And perhaps he might have, he might have been a little bit tardy getting to the office and using the restroom. And so Lacy was tasked with addressing that particular situation. And she did it professionally without fail.
And so when you're looking at, you know, creating a culture of student first, I mean, Lacy is at the heart of that. She's tremendous at what she does, and she's a perfect example of the Tiger Talent.
Lastly, before we part ways, it's absolutely critical that we say that you have to party like it's your birthday.
It's my birthday or something, or just party like it's my birthday. Hey, Ricky Balfour, party like it's your birthday.
That's perfect. That's perfect.
Okay, Lacy, more embarrassed. But come on forward. So normally I tell people that this is the award for dedication that you can ring and lord over them. However, I think this would be more the emergency bell. If there's another restroom situation, if you hear that, come on in. So congratulations.
Thanks very much.
This month, our Tiger Talent is Mr. Veranda, our history teacher at the Sherrod Junior High. Number one, he is committed to relationships. This guy is with the kids. He forms those relationships with all kids, but especially the at-risk kids. Get those kids motivated. Some of the students from last year wanted to be a history teacher because he was here. And so where they did not like the school up to that point, but now they want to be a history teacher.
Well, once I start talking about Mr. Veranda, my enthusiasm will be through the roof. He is very approachable, whether you're a staff or a student. You know, I think people feel comfortable working with him, confiding in him.
He is definitely a character. He is one of those people who you can, you know, joke around with, can put a smile on your face, but then also knowing the aspect of, you know, his outside work experience as well, and knowing who, like, the things that he's had to deal with as a person before he became a teacher. You know, understanding more of the home backstories.
Before he retired in his previous employment, he dealt with kids and families and had to make those relationships. So he has that background knowledge as well. He does a great job of, you know, making those relationships in the classrooms as well, but also the knowledge base of knowing what to teach. There's a lot of, there's a lot of dates and places and people and history, and he knows those. And he's able to relate that, that history to current times as well.
I know that he does a lot of projects with them that I think helps them understand how it affects and how it applies to their own lives. The students tell me a lot that Mr. Veranda and I are in the running to be their favorite teacher. So we are at odds. It's funny to hear them sometimes like, oh, Mr. Veranda did this. Like, he's kind of inching up there today. And I'm like, okay, well, we're doing something fun in science. Maybe that'll change your mind. And so it's kind of funny how we're right across the hall from each other, too, and how it's like a back and forth of who are the kids going to like more today based on what we're doing in class, I guess.
He's almost like, like a grandparent or an uncle or something.
Just got the age change.
I like to joke the battle that happened in the year 1219. And it's like, so Veranda, what was that like?
He does do that all the time.
How, what I can do to like up my game, I guess, in terms of engaging them and like making them want to be in here.
There's many, many years of him doing great work here at the junior high. To start off with, during COVID, I call him the combat kid because during COVID, he came in when everybody wanted to get out of education. And so he came in, he helped us out with subbing, volunteering, and making relationships with kids as a substitute. He worked for the maintenance department as well. So he's been here throughout the whole year, the last four years.
It was, I think, a very easy and fitting decision to, you know, it's like, we got this guy on here, you know, full time, you know, like, he's here every day anyway, whether he's subbing or mowing or demolishing walls. He was actually the guy that filled in for me during my paternity leave in the fall of '21. I'm not sure how many days. He wasn't here following that as a substitute. He's doing maintenance work all the time. And so this guy is just, he, he's everywhere. Like, his, his, his presence is felt or seen in numerous locations, whether people realize it or not.
Onri, definitely is probably one of them that I would have to pick. Smart is definitely another one. And leader would probably be another one.
The guy knows a lot of stuff. You know, I told him many times, you know, I'm a history major. And I didn't know all this stuff, you know, like, probably because he's centuries old.
He gave a degree after he retired and went back to school and now is going to be certified as a history teacher. We're really, 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 really glad that he is here with us at the junior high.
So Mr. Veranda has continued the career of service, first for the state of Illinois and now for the Sherrod School District, and we're so happy to have you. So please go ring this in Mike and Haley's face tomorrow.
You guys should like this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all that. Thank you for getting that footage out, Kayla. Would that move on to consent agenda items? Any questions on the consent agenda items? Here in our entertainment motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented? Something over here.
You do.
Yeah.
Okay. A motion was made by Mr. Kaber, seconded by Mrs. DeBlak, to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Mr. Kaber?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlak?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller Love?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, welcome everyone again. We have a relatively short report tonight. The first item up for bid is the school calendar for FY '26. So not for the coming year, which was adopted last year, but this is for, I guess, the year after next. So it is my recommendation that concurs with the staff preference to approve Calendar A, which realistically mirrors the, mirrors the path that we've been on for quite some time now. Week in the spring, week in the fall, between each quarter, solid two weeks at the holiday break for semester. And getting out, I used to say with more confidence, now I chuckle, hopefully getting out before June in the future. So that is my recommendation and again, concurs with the staff input to approve Calendar A for FY '26.
Any questions on the calendar? Okay, here in our entertainment motion to approve Calendar A as presented?
Absolutely.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion was made by Mr. Helm, seconded by Mr. Dominic, to approve Calendar A for the fiscal year '26. Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyons?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlak?
No.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Kaber?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller Love?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item we have is permission to seek bids for buses this year. We will be seeking to get two new 77-passenger buses. This is in accordance with our fleet renewal rotation, if you will. So tradition started by Mr. Boucher and trying to continue so that we can rotate two of the old buses out of service. But honestly, what will happen is two of the ones that pretty much consistently sit here and are just used for spares, those are the ones we'll let loose unless there's something specifically wrong with the two oldest ones on the road. And then we will let those go. It's just a fleet renewal, two at a time. Last year, we had a Lyft bus and then a shorter 48, was it 48-passenger bus? This year, we're just going to go back to two new 77-passenger buses. And that has been built into the budget each year.
Are we all caught up on actually getting the buses to order?
Yes, frankly. And I hope these are not like the last ones. We have, just for future reference, a side note here. As much as we have been using our mini-buses, depending on what the budget looks like, getting closer to May or June might possibly bring that up. If our fund balances are enough that we can start looking for another mini-bus to rotate in and get rid of one of the older ones, that would probably be prudent this year. And also on transportation, we're probably looking at expense for a driver's ed car in the very near future. So I bet I'll have some plans for that once we get closer to the end of the budget year.
They keep track of every, for every bus, you know, how much money they're putting into it and stuff? Is that how they kind of track? Or they just purely by miles or?
No, Joe, it's, it's fun to talk to Joe because when you go over there, he, he'll basically say, this has got the such-and-such engine in it, and this is what always goes wrong with him. Okay, this is one of the newer ones, and it's a significantly better drivetrain, but we have problems with the springs, which I'm just picking out of thin air. So he probably also has the buses named in addition to numbered. But he very much, yeah. So just because it's the oldest bus doesn't necessarily mean that that'll be the one that comes off the road. It'll be the, the most problematic ones will be the ones he tries to get off the road.
Are we going to look at trying to, you know, sell or auction off the other ones instead of trading them in or?
I wanted to try that this year, yes. So the, all of the dealers who will be, realistically, we're looking at three dealers that'll submit this. They've all been notified that we want a little better deal, and otherwise, no hard feelings, we'll try to auction them ourselves. So at bare minimum, I know we can get what we traded them for asked.
Go forth and do good things.
Okay. Last item to talk about tonight, we talked in the past a little bit about roofing bids. We were kind of, we were kind of pinned into a unique spot. We didn't want to jump on approximately $400,000 to maybe even a half a million dollar project until we were squared away with what we were going to spend at Sherrod Grade School. So now that we're squared away with that and done with it, the architect said that it would probably be prudent to wait and try to get something done over the fall break. And that's going to be for a couple of reasons. Number one, the roofing, by the time we were looking at, even talking about getting our bids out, you know, two months ago, most of the roofers were already booked for this coming summer. So obviously, the price was going to go up substantially. The second thing is, is those are not instructional areas. By and large, it's a hallway and gym three are the roofs that have to be removed and replaced. So that's something that it's not, you can't have occupancy while they're working on those according to the architect and the ROE. And if it's not classroom, it's less likely to cause a disruption if they can't fit it all in during the fall break. Plus, he said the prices should be incredibly more friendly during the fall break because that's the time when they're going to be not busy. So with the board's permission, I would like to talk to the architect and get some things rolling to try to see if we can get bids in place for the fall break. Don't need any official motion, just making sure that everybody knows what's happening.
Get the rest off, go forth. Okay, is that moving over to communication correspondence? Anything, all I can say is thank you to the local law enforcement for doing the armed safety checks today, so.
Ironically enough, right after we, it was almost on cue, we were talking about it here in the office. And Becky goes, oh, look at that. And we all looked out front and there was some, because the Jeff Parker's route stops right here and drops preschool kids off at the, at the preschool next door. And lo and behold, somebody was going this way. And guess who was right behind the bus? Deputy Mendoza. So there was a little surprise there. So we actually got to see it in action. I'm like, well, how about that? This works like a charm. So we, it was kind of, it was a calculated decision in terms of, we knew that there would be a few questions. And I think we maybe fielded, what, four or five calls here and a couple emails.
Yeah, a couple emails, a couple calls.
So it, but it was, it was calculated that we didn't want to say, oh, okay, everybody be on your best driving behavior today. I think it's important that, you know, the state, so thank you to the state police, thank you to Rock Island County, thank you to Mercer County, because they all work together, and there was somebody following each bus. So it was really awesome to be able to see. And, you know, I think people pay closer attention when they see something like that. Maybe they'll mind those stop arms a little bit more. Because we do have, we still, unfortunately, we still do have every month a lot of those stop arm violations. So the driver will write it up, we'll be able to pull it from the camera, give that to Deputy Mendoza, and then he farms it out to the appropriate organization to get those people their prize.
Anything else for communication correspondence?
About Moss Ed now?
No, we'll do that later. You can novelize in public.
Yeah, some of it.
Yeah. Yeah, the stuff that's in public session, you, yes, you can talk about.
Something that on the last BOSS Ed, kind of like the agenda, some of the, okay, so BOSS Ed, if you don't know, is a combination of all the different school districts that come in together for the special services and all that. But one of the things that some of the board members are kind of pushing for is to get our different schools involved with the Gray Matters movement and stuff a lot more. So at the last Gray Matters meeting, they encouraged us to come out and kind of share what resources we offer to kids and that for mental health. And so these were some of the examples. So I was kind of last minute. And I was texting Carl, hey, hate to throw this on you, but could you give me a kind of a list of, you know, all our counselors and every services we kind of have? Well, some of the school districts typed up these nice little forms. And that, but it's mainly just going to some of these different functions and showing that we're supporting our kids and we're there for them. And that, so, so kind of something that I'd like to do is, or beg Carl to, you know, in his spare time, because he's never, you know, he's out of his spare time. Or maybe, you know, if we could type up something like this, this was Moline, East Moline. This was Moline's, kind of what they did, just simple that they could give a kid, you know, when they're at some of these different functions, like, hey, if you need to. I know, like, in our bathrooms, they used to have the QR codes and stuff. But just something that we could easily hand out, say, here, this is at Sherrod, this is what we're offering. And that, another thing to kind of tie along with this, my daughter kind of is one of the leaders of the Gray Matters for Sherrod. And it's like getting some of those kids to come out here and talk to you to kind of, so you can hear what, some of the great things that they're doing, too. So I was just texting her, I'm like, hey, would you want to do that? She's like, yeah. And that, so, you know, as, you know, just getting some of these different organizations that our kids are doing and having them. I know we've had FFA, you know, and stuff of the, some of the big ones, but these are newer movements that are kind of coming.
We have a phenomenal communications department who can really put something together. Put those to shame. I'm going to go ahead and brag right now. I'm guessing in about six minutes, we would.
Right?
Not maybe she.
But it's like they set up a table. So like, the last one was the five-year anniversary that we went, that I went to last week. And, you know, they have tables all set up. And so they would kind of have the board members of different school districts kind of here and just if. And just if the kids come by or a parent, you know, all are welcome to these. So these go up to college level kids. They have adult groups that meet too. So it's a lot, I guess it was kind of an educational thing for me too, because I didn't realize, I thought it was just for kids. But it's not, you know, they have Gray Men and they call them. And like I said, the colleges, they've hit Augustana and some of the other colleges and are spreading out a lot more. But it started here in the Coliseum and that. So anyway, that was kind of a push that some of the board members were asking at the BOSS Ed. And as far as other little updates, there's lots going on at BOSS Ed. But, you know, some of the concerns are there's a lot of openings right now there. And that they're having to, to have a waitlist for kids to get in. So here we have some of our kids that have the biggest demands and they can't get into these services because we can't get enough teachers and employee, you know, people to work out. So, you know, encourage, I guess, I don't know, how we can just push to get staff out there and that. Because our kids are suffering because they're on a waitlist because they can't get into BOSS Ed. So, but they had interviews, but anyway, they're having some struggles. We'll go with that. That's it.
Thank you.
And it's a 45 minute now instead of my 15 minute.
I know the Haley degree that does the Gray Matters, her.
Yeah.
And then, um, there's a couple more in, uh, that were both UT kids, my former students. So Adam Smith was one of them. His dad was a retired East Moline cop. They do some things.
Maybe he's gotten really close with Haley.
So. There's a few organizations that we can, yeah, definitely.
She presented at work and we had.
Yeah.
Three sessions with her and we had 3,000 people log on from all around the world.
Yeah. So I mean, it's, it's a growing, but just, like I said, just something simple if you could, I think, you could use the examples they did. And then just say, yes, yes.
No. Anything else? Any future agenda items?
I will put something on for, um, once I talk to people, we'll get something going.
Okay.
So I'm planning the next couple of months here to move ahead.
Cool.
Like what we can actually do here at the high school. So I'll reach out to some of the organizations, talk to them, we'll work on something like that. So by the time the sun shines, sure, yeah, I'll take them. Regularly, we will be on the road to progress.
And I'm in the process of training adults for a therapy. She, he's got to be six months old again.
Everything's coming full circle for you, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, uh, no future agenda items? I'll entertain a motion going to co-assess and force of five LC 120C subsections C, 1 through 12, 16 and 21.
Sure.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Sure.
Is there a why not?
What else we got going on?
That was the paper?
I.
That was the polls?